Shouldn't be.
Couldn't get my.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
Like literally have my laptop walking around. About to get off his call. Like I'm getting a tour of your house. Pretty funny.
You're welcome. I haven't seen. Yeah, and he was the.
He was. Five six, we're loaded. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you. All right, we're gonna get this meeting going, so it's Thursday, February 23rd. It is five oh four, I think, and we'll call the Integral Care Board of Trustees Meeting to order. We'll start with agenda item one, which is citizens' comments, excuse me. Or anybody here that would like to speak to the board today? Hearing none, you have one more chance at the end. All right. Welcomes and announcements, no picking up anything new today other than, Anne, welcome to your second meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Stand over there by the monitor.
You should. I, we really do give you a big thanks for trying it out. It was pretty cool, although you were larger than life.
I know. It's embarrassing.
Well, we now know it works, that's great. Hi. Welcome, we're just getting started, come on in. All right, so we have our consent agenda tonight under item number three. And we have board meeting minutes, cash and business report for last month. And the FY23 Language Access Plan, the Texas Veterans Commission Fund. So any. Anything that wants to be removed from the consent agenda? Would like to discuss? If not, I'll take a motion to accept.
So moved.
All right, thank you, we have a motion of second, all in favor? All right. Item number four, which is our action item, so our first is to discuss and take appropriate action or financial statements and budget amendments. If applicable for the period under January 31st, 2023. Anna, hello. Hi, Della.
Hi.
And finance committee did meet last week? Yay, good. All right, because we have a long discussion for what today, so.
Great.
All right. So if we can turn to our monthly pages quickly again. So for January year-to-date operations and capital projects. As of January year-to-date, our total revenues for both, for both operations and capital projects was forty-four million nine hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. And our expenditures were fifty-four thousand four hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars, which resulted in a total year-to-date deficit of nine million four hundred sixty thousand and twenty-five dollars. Out of that, the capital projects expenditures year-to-date have been six million two hundred thirty-five thousand forty-six dollars, of which we've applied over one million that was planned from our fund balance to cover that difference. And then that leaves for the operation side, a deficit of a balance of eight million two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and five dollars. Out of that, again, going back to our CCP payment that we have not booked any of that yet, is the accrual of that is eight million seven hundred fifty thousand. So when you get that difference, our year-to-date surplus as of January is four hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. Just to let you know, we did find out from the CFO consortia that the intent is that HHSC would be able to have something for us after March 6th. There are some appeals on some of the cost reports that they are needing to review. And in fact, I think that we plan to meet with them tomorrow to, we have an appeal going to HHSC on our cost report. We are one of the five or six centers, and so we're having that done. And so there won't be any final outcome or payment until all of that's taken care of. So that's just kind of where we are right now, we're still waiting to find out what those final numbers will be. So. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Della made a change on the, our average daily expense. We are now looking at our FY23, which is year-to-date September through, through January, October, excuse me, October through January. And that cost per day is three hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars, which means that year-to-date are days of operation that we have, have, have come down from, I think it was eighty-eight before, and it's now seventy-three. And the only one other thing I wanted to mention, which was current, and that happened this month, is that we did get the proceeds, we did have the sale and the proceeds from the Woodrow Field property. And so those are not included in this, just wanted to give y'all, the board, to know that that sale did go through. And that sale was for one million, our, our net proceeds is one million seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, so. Della's gonna go over some of the budget amendments.
And one, Della, if I recall correctly, last month you, you gave us a heads up about the day's calculation. And so seventy-three was what I think.
Right, it was mainly because we normally use the prior year, and I had not taken into account that we had, with the class comp, our daily expenses had really gone up, and so I recalculated it.
Yep.
And so we don't use the month of September because it's so low.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, for the month of January, the budget amendments is the city of Austin, we knew this contract was gonna end, and that was a reduction of seventy, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. The bridge to recovery was reduced by eighty-eight thousand. A new contract from the city of Austin, that is for community health worker services, hundred and twenty-four thousand. And then we had a significant increase in the Lifeline Expansion Planning, which is the nine nine eight, nine eight eight. And, no. Okay, sorry. I think that's right. An increase of eight hundred ninety-nine thousand. I just want to mention that there is a formula error on the FTE that was on the prior ones that was submitted, or at the finance committee and in the budget. It should be one thousand one hundred ninety-two point six oh FTE that we currently have.
And that's budgeted? Okay. Any questions? I don't see anything unusual this month, right? Ordinary, okay. If not, any questions, I'll take a motion to accept.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we appreciate that, we'll be moving on to the fiscal year 2022 financial audit. So Diane? Hi, welcome.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you your 2022 audit, almost fresh off the press. Well, first I do want to say it's our pleasure to be here again and to work with Anna, Della, Mark, and your whole financial team. We do want to thank them for their assistance and the cooperation they provided during the audit. We do audit eighteen MHMR centers, and so we're very appreciative of your responsiveness and being able to get, get our requests to us as soon as possible. So on pages three through six, we do report an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements of the center. This is technically the wording in that opinion. And overall, this means your financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the kind of wording that you want to have. If you're familiar with auditing reports, it changed a little bit this year because new auditing standards were implemented, and it just changes the wording, changes the order, it just looks a little different, but it's pretty much the same, same procedures and everything else. So on page nineteen, we have your statement of net position. This government-wide statement presents both governmental and business-type activities that the center participates in. The governmental activities column presents the center's general fund, along with your capital assets and your long-term obligations, into one column to view all of the center's assets and liabilities. The center has total net position of governmental activities of sixty-six point seven million dollars, you see that at the bottom of the page, of which fifty-two percent of that represents unrestricted net position. Of course, your, your other net position is invested already in capital assets mostly. The business-type activities, which consists mostly of Integral Care Foundation, presents total net position of four point eight million dollars. On page twenty, we have your statement of activities. This is a government-wide statement that presents the operating activity of the center by program. The center had a net decrease in net position of governmental activities of two point six million dollars. The business-type activities, again, mostly the Integral Care Foundation, had a decrease in net position of two hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. You can see a comparison to the prior year on page eleven, and here's a little excerpt of that. The center had an increase in net position of governmental activities last year of just over one million, and an increase in net position of business-type activities of thirty-five thousand dollars. Page twenty-one is the balance sheet for your general fund. The general fund has total fund balance of just under thirty-six point nine million dollars, of which twenty-four, twenty-two point four million dollars is unassigned. A portion of fund balance is reported as non-spendable for the amount of prepaid items and the long-term notes receivable related to the Housing First Oak Springs partnership. The center also has fund balance reported as restricted, committed, and assigned, and the breakdown of that is disclosed on page forty-seven, as you can see here. There was a new restricted reserve set up for the Housing First Oak Springs for the stabilization reserve that you approved, I think it was last year, December. And then we include a reconciliation at the, at the bottom, whoops, like, yeah, right, the bottom there, that reconciles fund balance on this statement to net position as presented on page nineteen. Then here's your statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund. The center ended the year with a decrease in fund balance in the general fund of two million one hundred seventeen thousand. You can see that, that includes proceeds from the Frost Bank loan of almost four point seven million dollars, but a lot of that was also invested in capital outlay. So you can see capital outlay was seven million dollars, so that's part of that, I guess you could look at it as part of that two million dollar decrease. This statement is also followed by a reconciliation to the change in fund balance on this statement that we just went over, to the change in net position on the full accrual basis as presented on page twenty. The net's really not that much different, but you can see most of these activities are all going to be related to your long-term capital assets and your long-term liabilities. And I always like to say that this next schedule is my favorite, because it has all these numbers, and it, it talks about your revenue in detail compared to your budget, and actual, just gives you a really good picture, a detailed picture of the center's activities this year. The center's revenues came in below final budgeted revenues by twenty-one point five million dollars, mainly in earned income or local revenues at the top. You can see city and county funds are quite a bit under, as well as the earned income, which is mostly Medicaid, Medicare type revenues. Federal funds came in under budget by six point eight million dollars, and you can see that's more than half of your page, is federal revenues this year. The eleven fifteen waiver revenues exceeded the final budget by one point two million dollars. And the MDNA on page fifteen provides further explanations for many of these significant variances, if you're interested. And then page twenty-five shows your expenditures. Came in below final budget by eighteen point seven million dollars, mostly in personnel and employee benefits, followed by the consultation and professional fees. I see this everywhere, most centers, you know, budget for full capacity or full, and often many of the centers have vacancies, so you're gonna see largest, usually largest increases in the below-budget personnel and employee benefits. The center had, had to implement a new accounting standard for leases this year, and I only mention that because it results in a reclass of facilities rent expense to debt service. So that's why you'll see a large below-budget for facilities and over-budget for principal, it's just a reclassification of those expenses for, for gap, but no overall increase or decrease, just different line item. Overall, the center's original and final budgets plan for a balanced budget, meaning your total revenues equal total expenditures, whereas the center ended the year with an actual decrease in fund balance of two point one million dollars. The next three pages just basically show, pages three, twenty-six through twenty-eight, present more detail for your business-type funds, such as your Housing First and your Integral Care Foundation. It will, Housing First does not have much activity at all as far as revenue expenditures, but the Integral Care Foundation includes all the HUD projects, as well as the standalone foundation as well. The footnotes, I just point out that the footnotes do include discussion of several subsequent events, including continued construction on the, the building on I-35. Discussion of various housing expansions, as well as the transition from the eleven fifteen waiver to the, to the, to the new direct, direct payment program and the continuing charity care pool. Your indirect cost rate this year calculated to be thirteen point eight four percent. And then, this is a summary of our auditor results, including the unmodified opinion on financial statements. We did not have any findings in our testing of grant compliance, nor did we have any findings regarding internal control over financial reporting. So our opinions and the result of that are all summarized here, as well as the major federal and state programs that were required to be tested this year. Anytime you have a number of new federal grants, we're required to test various compliance aspects, and so this is what, more than we normally test in, in most years, but a lot of these are new that you haven't had before, so they're required to be tested in more detail. Okay, well, that is a quick summary of my auditor results, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, I want to commend the entire finance and accounting team for their tireless work. I know it was difficult with moving, right, right after the audit was supposed to begin and that kind of thing, but we, we pulled it together today for you, and it's, it's very commendable also to account for an organization with more than a hundred million dollars and not have any audit adjustments. So that's always, I always like to say that, that's Della's report card. But anyway, I'd be happy.
I hear that one.
Is he what? So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve your center, it's always a pleasure to come down here and see you again.
Thank you, Diane. Any questions? Clean outs are the best, aren't they?
They are.
They are. All right, well, thank you. So if we don't have any questions or comments on the budget, I will accept a motion to approve the budget as presented. All right, we have motion of second, all in favor? Thank you. All right, we really appreciate you being here, I know you have a number of reports over there. Yeah. They'll be available.
Yes, yes, and I'm sure you're gonna mail them out to everybody that gets down, so.
Thanks so much, appreciate you being with us. All right, so we'll move on from item number four to item number five, which are information items. Oh, we have another report on Bells. We were all so excited about this last month, I'm glad you keep continuing to bring it in front of us. So we have leveraging Bell's AI to improve the documentation experience.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
I'm not the chief strategy officer, but I, I do see that on the screen.
You'll take the title, great.
I don't know about that. I'll stay in technology for right now. Okay, yeah, yeah. All right, so I did hear there was a lot of excitement and interest on the Bell's platform during the last meeting when Teresa and Scott presented on this. So I'm here to show you kind of a quick demo, or a walkthrough of how this operates from a clinician's perspective who's out in the community. So we're gonna start as if we were a clinician out in the community, and launch the Bell's application directly from our agency-issued iPhone. And all of these right here, the Bell's application is deployed to all of our iPhones agency-wide. The application is only approved to be used on the Integral Care issued devices, not on personal devices. And the application is HIPAA compliant and secure, but we do not want that out on personal devices. Everything I'm gonna be showing you today is from our test environment, so no client information, it's all test, test data. All right, so when I launch this. Application, it's going to pull up my schedule for the day, so it's gonna show everything I have coming up. Appointments, it could be things that I've blocked my schedule for, group sessions. If there's a group session, you'll see multiple bubbles in the, in the photo icons, similar to the one that's down below. And if I want more appointment details and to see more information about an appointment that's coming up, I'll just click on that button, and I can pull up that information. And the really cool thing about this mobile application side is I can pull in information directly from my avatar, the electronic health record, if I click on Lisa's information. So I'm going to say I'm going to an appointment with Lisa right now, and I'm gonna click on her name down at the bottom. And this pulls up some of her basic clinical information, as well as some demographic information. Now, the three buttons up top, under the contact info, those are all hot buttons, meaning I can click on the mobile phone option, and it will call out to Lisa. It's going to mask my phone number, so it's going to say that it's a private number calling Lisa from that button, but I can call her right then and there, I don't have to type it in, I don't have to go search the chart, find her phone number to give her a call. Same thing with that address button, I can click on it, and it will pull up the navigation with my maps of choice that's designated in my iPhone. And with the emergency contact, it will call the emergency contact. Staff in the community are really loving that feature, they don't have to take notes beforehand, print out items beforehand, put things in their phone to call them, they can just click on that button, and it calls the client, letting them know they're on their way, confirming their session, things like that. All right, and none of this is data entry from this point, it is view-only, it's pulling in the diagnosis information, the treatment plan information from the clinical records. So all of this is pulling from my avatar, and it's for informational purposes only, view-only, just so you can educate yourself before meeting with Lisa right there in the community. The very bottom option is called scribbles, this is essentially a scratch pad where you can write notes to yourself within the mobile application and share those notes with your care team members. So if I work for MCOT and I want to make a note about Lisa, and I want all of my team members to see that note, but it's not really something that would go into the client's chart, maybe Lisa's going out of town for two weeks, you can put that in a scribble and share that with your team. All right, so I'll bring up the scribbles next, and this is going to show me any reminders that I put in here for myself, or any of those shared reminders, like I was mentioning. And this is what the scribbles look like once you open up one of the note options. A really cool functionality about the scribbles is I can create a drop-in text template, called drop-ins, so from like what I've written down. So if I always use a set of resources for individuals that I'm meeting out in the community, I can create a drop-in, just like a, a template of text, and quickly save that into my preferences and favorites. And whenever I'm creating that scribble, I'll just select the resources drop-in that I've created for myself, and it will drop into that scribble. We can set those up at an organizational level as well, so we have a lot of drop-ins that are used very frequently throughout our case management services or community-based services. But staff can also create their own drop-ins if they have their own preferences and certain texts that they use. You'll see in this scribble that there are three photos as well, so if I'm meeting with Lisa, and maybe she's on a new medication, I can take a picture of that medication, and it will save directly to that scribble, I don't have to write it down. It's only saving to the application, it's not saving to the phone, it's not going to the camera roll, and then whenever I get back to enter my progress note, it will be right there available for me to jot that down. All right, this next feature is something that our mobile staff absolutely love, they can use the microphone option to dictate their text directly in the mobile application. And so if they always, you know, get into their car right after a session, and they want to get all of those thoughts into their, their scribble or their notepad, they can do that without having to type it out, without having to pull out their computer or use the little keyboard. They can dictate directly into that mobile application. That's only available on the mobile side, it's not available on the desktop side right now, but I know the community-based staff absolutely love this feature. So we'll say I just dictated all of this text directly into my notes, and now I'm done with my session with Lisa, I will click finish, and it will create the visit from the mobile application. This is going to send a to-do reminder for the staff to then finalize the progress note, enter the actual progress note documentation, the start time, the stop time, all of the state reporting and counterdata fields. And it will give me a action item once I log into my desktop application and I'm back at the office, and I will have a worklist to go from. All right, so I'm back at the office, and I'm going to see that worklist on the right-hand side under recent activities. Managers also have access to see all of their staff members' draft notes, so if a staff member leaves and they're, they have five or ten notes that were left in draft, managers can see those and assign them to somebody else to sign off on, or sign off on them, delete them, things like that. So this is what the Bell's dashboard looks like when a staff member logs in for the first time, they have some gamification up at the top, how fast they're entering their notes, how many lives they've impacted in the Bell's application specifically, how many notes they've written, things like that. I'm gonna go ahead and launch the note from where we left off in the mobile application, right under the recent activities. And this is what it looks like when I'm actually. And this is what it looks like when I'm actually entering my progress note. This is where all of the artificial intelligence plays in, and it starts bringing up clinical recommendations, uses that gamification off to the side that kind of shows a tracking of how fast you're entering your progress note from the session time to the start time and how quickly you're entering those. If I want to pull in all of the information that I did take in the mobile application, all I have to do is highlight it, just like this, and then I would select the specific section that I want to copy that to. So highlight it, select the section, and it just drops right into the note. Another thing that we can set up on the organizational level is expanded acronyms. So we have a whole library right now of acronyms that we want to automatically expand in all of our progress notes, so that it makes sense to the reader that's external, they might not know our internal acronym jargon. Staff can also create their own auto-expansion, so they might use an acronym that's not really agency-wide. They can set those up very easily by right-clicking and setting up that acronym. But this is an example of how it looks. I typed in CST and it automatically changed that to crisis short-term group home. Another fun feature is the ability to tag other case managers or care team members using the at symbol, very similar to social media or other ways that you tag individuals, teams, things like that. You can tag prescribers, other case managers, anybody who is assigned to work with that client, simply by clicking the at symbol. You don't have to look in their chart and see who their prescriber is. You can also tag their emergency contact or any guardians that are assigned into their admission form and bring up their name. And then if you're familiar with the Grammarly tool, it also does spelling and grammar check very similar in format. Staff can go through and accept the items individually, or they can click on that little bubble that is red, it says three off to the right-hand side, and accept all of the spelling and grammar errors. They don't have to do it individually. If there is something that's maybe a medical term or a medication that is spelled correctly and the system is picking it up, you can add it to the dictionary and the system will learn for everybody that that is spelled correctly and that it's a medical term. The natural language processing starts coming into play whenever it's starting to make clinical recommendations based on discouraged verbs and discouraged clinical terms that we have set up from an agency level. So right here, the system is telling me that I'm not supposed to be typing in the word transported because transporting a client is not a billable service, and so it's asking me to please describe the services that were provided during the visit in the vehicle. And it's asking, or it's recommending that I change that to accompanied. It's going to do the same thing at the bottom where it says helping is indicating that you are doing this for the individual, we are trying to do this with, I recommend you change this to supported. So we set these all up at an organizational level. Staff can set these up at their user preference level as well, but the system is consistently learning and building upon itself as well. All right, so all of those items will be presented to the staff at once. I showed you the different color coding separately, so you could get a sense of how those different items are working, but staff will see it more like this. They'll see, okay, we changed six acronyms, you used seven drop-ins, we checked 24 words, and it will show it all in a very concise way. They won't have to click through multiple screens to get those clinical recommendations and acronyms and spelling and grammar. It will be presented all at once. There's some celebration at the bottom saying there's no more issues, everything's been corrected. Staff really like the, all of the positive reinforcement that Bells gives them as they're completing their note. And then managers really like this functionality. So Bells tracks everything, so it tracks how long it's taking staff to sign their notes, how many recommendations they're using, how many recommendations they're ignoring, if they are dismissing the expanded acronyms, in what context they're dismissing those and why. And managers have access to this dashboard and can drill down on all of that data, see the context that it was used, and it will take them directly to that progress note. They can also set up an automated report so that this delivers to their inbox on a regular basis. It will just be sent to their inbox weekly or monthly at whatever interval that they decide. And then this is another glimpse of the dashboard that staff see whenever they log in. It does give them a view of their distribution of services. It will show them like how many services in the last 30 or 90 days they've spent doing outreach or skills training or crisis. And the Bells avatar changes with every holiday, with every event. You can see I took, I must have taken this screenshot the week of the Super Bowl because they have a half jersey with Kansas City and the Eagles. I think it's now in a Kansas City jersey. And on the Bells dash, sorry, on the Bells roadmap is the ability to customize the Bells avatar to meet the staff person's preferences. So they do have that on their roadmap so that the avatar will be customizable with all different things. All right, and then the last, this last slide I have for y'all is the Bells roadmap, where we are right now, building out our progress notes and where we're going. We have the group note, which is the one we're focusing on right now and trying to get out before the end of March, and the GERP group note as well, having the co-practitioner and multiple notes signers. And the shared team scribbles was already released in February, early February, so I did show you guys that, and then a glance at the rest of the roadmap. Any questions?
Thank you. Tara, when you finish with Louise, I just have. I'd like for you to take us full circle, if you could, where you started last board meeting. And I think it's important that we're not chasing shiny objects in healthcare and all the things that you've taken us through as an end, but this idea of assisted technology. And then what kind of outcomes do we hope to see because we're implementing, and we've heard a stellar presentation this evening?
On an outcome-wise, I'll start there, because I think that our whole goal is to make sure that we have our mission at focus. And if we don't give our staff the tools that they need to achieve that mission, then I think we're doing a disservice to the entire community. Right now, that's where my focus is, is making sure that our staff are happy, our staff have the tools that they need to do what they love best, and that's serve our clients.
Also, you may not have this off the top of your head, but you mentioned the amount of time savings and then also the alignment with accurate billing.
I do have that off the top of my head, so. That's one of the really cool functions or the like outcomes that Bells has brought so far. We have over 200 staff, I think it's 207 staff right now that are actively using Bells, and it has brought our note writing process from session creation, sorry, note creation time to note start time down to under two hours. So from the time that their service started, they're signing their progress notes within two hours. Now, from the time they start their progress note, it's 3 minutes and 22 seconds, so it's making their process to write their progress notes in under four minutes. And previously, it was 15 to 20 minutes per progress note. And so it's drastically reducing the time that it's taking them to document and to do paperwork and write things down, and that's not why people get into clinical services.
And it's not a luxury, it is a standard for doing business that everybody's going to be adopting. We're just maybe a little bit ahead of some of the others, but it's not a luxury, it's something that we need to be doing. Our stakeholders are going to be holding us to standards that can only be met by using these kind of tools. Well done to everybody who's made this happen.
And if I recall correctly, your adoption rate, the 207, did you say? That's grown.
Oh, yes.
Pretty rapidly, if I recall.
I can't speak for like all of the staff, I'm sure like Marlene and David have more information than I do, but I can tell you that we have like requests every single day, when can I get bells, when can I get bells?
The demand's there.
Hello, Marlene Buchanan, Director of Systems of Care. So we did start it as a pilot program for some of our LOC3 and community-based teams, and then our school-based therapists that are having a lot of connectivity issues in the schools because of all the walls and security. And so we started there, and then, as Tara said, every single day, it's more request and more request and growing and growing. So we still have some staff that are not using bells, and so we're continuing to push program by program to get bells on board.
That was going to be my question, where do I go to sign up for you guys? I'm on my second DMTHR, and I hate that one as well as the first one. That looks fantastic.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions, maybe not in this application, but it may be in the iPhone, maybe in the application, language translations. Do you have that capability in that system? Maybe in the phone itself, I don't know. Is that anything that's considered, think about that?
So we do have translated assessments that we provide to our clients from the EHR, but not in the Bells application for a staff-facing side at this time.
Is that a consideration there? Does it make sense to do that?
I don't know, but I will ask.
Yeah, it just seems that sometimes you may have situations in the field where somebody's needing to tell you something and they may not always be able to say it in your language. And if you have a translation capability, then you can address that, I'm just curious. Also, are there prompts? Oh, you got.
Teresa Williams, Director of Clinical Services. I missed part of the question, was it about language access in the community?
Translation.
All of our staff have access to multiple contracts for Language Line interpreters. So on their phone, we also have an app to connect directly to Language Line for any language.
So it is in the phone, good.
It is in the phone. Now, we need to talk about if they're using the phone for documenting, then they can also access the Language Line through their computer.
Also, in your meeting calendar, do you get those prompts about your meeting times and appointment times, I should say?
Yeah, so that is set up on a staff preference level, they can set up to be reminded whenever their appointments are coming up.
I was going to ask if you had a roundtable with staff to talk about this stuff, but if they're coming and asking you for it.
We have, we have a Teams channel where all of the Bells early adopters are part of that Teams group. And then we have our Bells super-users who are also part of that Teams group, so they have an open line of communication whenever there's any questions or new requests, or maybe they just have an idea that would be really nice, a new feature in Bells. They can put that in the Teams channel so that it's all logged in one place, and then we communicate that back and we work with the engineers to get that developed. And any new innovations that staff come up with, we're part of an early adopter process, so we're really building this out to meet the needs of integral care. We're only one of five organizations throughout the nation who are piloting this right now for NetSmart. And when they, when our staff have really good ideas, the NetSmart engineers are on a two-week release timeline, so they're getting to see that their ideas like go into the system really quickly. That's another like really rewarding feature.
This is awesome. Thank you.
I have a question.
And I have a question, but you go first, Emily.
I was just going to ask, and excuse me, I have a list, I'm wearing my retainer. Is there a way in which there's oversight to help monitor like the quality of care within, on the, like, not on the consumer side, but with the person utilizing that? I noticed on the top, there's a tab that's at late notes, and it had like a number saying 11. What is the quality of care and oversight and managing making sure that that is being looked at too?
So all of that is delivered to the managers in their reports, so they get a report on a regular basis for anyone who is on their staff team, how soon their notes are being entered. The quality side would really be in the auditing of the progress notes, which we haven't really, I don't think we've been through a full quarterly cycle to be able to see those benefits yet, but we're hoping that with all of the clinical recommendations, that it's only going to improve the quality of the documentation.
And has there been any complaints of what like maybe potential inefficiencies look like on the user side?
There is one, one thing right now where staff have to sign, final approve their progress note in the MyAvatar application, but that is going to be released in April. And that's only because we use an extra layer of security called document routing in MyAvatar that adds all of the credentials to the progress notes every single time without having to do crystal reports. But that's the, really been the only con at this point, and it's still not keeping people from not wanting to use the platform.
So I have two questions, one related to sharing of information. So does this information go into the EHR? It does, okay. Which information, all of this, all of this data or just the notes goes in?
All of the progress notes are transferred directly into the electronic health record so that we can bill on those notes and then report on those notes.
Okay.
And then the scribbles are the only things that are not transferred to the electronic health record.
The scribbles, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and that's like the notes that people are keeping for themselves, reminders for the staff, or shared reminders between teams. And those don't always have to be linked to a client. You can have a scribble that has no information related to a client on it, it's just related to your own personal reminders.
So that transfer to the HR is automated, right? It's just automated, okay. And then, so is the thinking then, I think I heard you say this, but to roll this out to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
We are on a very tight ramp-up schedule to get everybody on the Bells platform. It will not be required, but we'll have this available for everybody to use it if they want to use it. It's more of a benefit to the progress noting platform. Let me go back to this roadmap right here.
Okay.
So we do have some progress notes that we have not yet built into the platform. So these are, this is the timeline of when we'll have everything built out. So we have the group note and the group, GERP note, and the GERP stands for goals, interventions, response, progress, and plan for future action. I looked at, sorry, okay. So that's a template of, so those two will be released before March 6. And then we have the helpline progress note, the IDD progress note, the SC care transition, which is the service coordinator care transition, another progress note for the IDD teams. Those ones will be released right after that, might not even need April and May to get those built out, probably March and April. And then we will get the injection and dosing note, that'll be the last note that we have to build out, out of the 14.
Okay, and so I think you just answered my question that these are all the notes, but I'm curious about the Austin Cares program with the clinicians in the 911 call center, whether they will be using this and what kind, I guess maybe they do, what kind of notes they do or?
Yes, so most, most of the community-based staff, crisis teams, substance use teams, all of their progress notes are already built out and they're ready to go. So those ones are already actively built and created. Now, the 988 and 911 call center, that would be included in the helpline progress note, and that one would be coming next.
Okay, and then the, the EMCOT notes are?
They're already active.
They're already working that, okay. Okay, and then it sounds to me like, I think you answered this question too, the clinical recommendations feature, that is something you can customize for integral care, it's not standardized by the vendor?
That's correct. So there's a library that is made available by the vendor, but all of that is optional. We don't have to use any of the library items. 99% of the customers, or the clinical recommendations that we have in place right now are 100% customized by integral care.
Okay, have you all experienced any limitations on what you can customize? I mean, in other words, have you wanted to customize something, but the program just doesn't? I mean, in other words, have you wanted to customize something, but the program just doesn't?
We have, yes, many times. But those are some of those enhancements that we've reached out to our Bell's team and they usually fix that or they say, oh, nobody's asked us for this yet. And they build it out and release it within that two-week sprint period.
Have you run up against anything that you couldn't? I'm just curious, limitations of the program? I mean, this is a fabulous program, looks very, very good. I'm just trying to understand the parameters, if there's things that, that you all thought would be useful and they just haven't been able to do.
The group note was one thing, but that's now released. The other is tying our state reporting and counterdata fields to service codes specifically. That's one thing that they're working on for a Texas-wide initiative because they, Tarrant County just recently purchased Bell's and they're trying to get more Texas organizations onboard. And I think the rules around our encounter data fields and our service codes specifically will really be good for that buy-in.
Okay, thank you.
But nobody's broken it yet, huh?
Not yet.
Just one more, on the management dashboard, could you just for a minute, talk about it? And I guess I'm primarily interested in, interested in the audit functions, chart audit functions. And I know, I would imagine that reduces a tremendous amount of time.
It does. And we, we recently requested that they start building out customized dashboards that will, will mirror some of the manual auditing functionality that we're doing right now in, in Lake Brooks area. So they are working on that for us and looking into that type of auditing tech. But right now, the manager dashboard allows managers to come in here and they can drill this down by their, by their staff and by their clinical teams. It gives them all of the clinical recommendations that their staff have either ignored, confirmed, or dismissed within the time period that they've designated. And there's a View Data button in the top right-hand corner. And that's gonna bring up all of the progress notes and they can filter that by just ignored rules. So if they only wanna see their staff who've ignored, maybe expanded acronyms, they can view that data and it will pull all of those progress notes up specifically. And it will show the exact context where that was ignored. Maybe they already spelled it out for the first time earlier in the note and now they are ignoring the next time they've used the acronym. And so managers have a lot of insight on what they can see in this dashboard.
One question. Very quick. How much training time is required for staff to adapt to this system?
So the interface is very user-friendly. I think that's another, okay, I would say roughly two hours and then a good full day of on-the-job, like playing around and training with it. Not very much time.
Thank you.
And I just, one more thing. Seeing this is uploaded into, into the electronic health record, do the consumer have access when requesting their medical records to the notes and everything actually within Bell's?
Yes, it would be the same as if they enter their progress notes directly in Avatar right now. They look the same. They, it seems as though the progress note was entered in Avatar the same way they have been for the last few years. So when, when clients request medical records, it would be the same process. They would get all of their progress notes.
Sherry?
Hi, Sherry Blythe, Director for Crisis Services, Specialty Substance Use Treatment and Justice Initiatives. Just to answer the question about the, the mobile teams. The mobile teams, of course, love this, the ones out in the field. It's a tremendous asset. At 911, they do not necessarily enter notes in the clinical health record. I just wanna make sure to say that.
Oh, they don't?
It depends on whether the client is already open or they choose to open, or whether it's an appropriate case to open into the health.
Oh, that's because who they're working with may not be a client, right? Is that the?
Correct. Or it may not be the, the right moment to open a case because that takes longer, you know, and, and people are experiencing a crisis at 911.
Okay, so, so, so they're not, they can't, okay. So they, do they use it at all or do they just use it for certain people?
They can use it for certain people.
How do they know that the person is someone they can use it for?
Well, it's determined on the basis of whether they're going to start. If they're opening a health record, then they can use it. If it's not a call that's appropriate for opening a health record, they wouldn't use it. But they are entering, there are, at the 911 Call Center, there are notes in the existing software there that are for 911 operators. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I'd, I'd like to think about that a little bit more. I'm not certain why you wouldn't wanna use it for all of the folks that they work with in the call center.
Well, we can talk.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there's lots of good reasons. I just don't understand them and like, I'd like to understand better.
Yeah, happy to gather more information on that.
Okay. So how does it work in the field for homeless individuals too? Because you would have the same circumstance, would you not? That some of them would be clients and some of them wouldn't?
I think Marlene can speak to that. I don't think homelessness itself is the factor.
Well, I'm thinking of, okay, so this is a sort of a multi-part question. I'm trying to remember if the path, if the host team, for example, includes someone from Integral Care, right? Okay. So that would be one question with regard to like the host team. Do they use it as part of that? And so a related question would be, I'm making some assumptions that I may not be correct about, that these folk, that those teams may be working with individuals who, who are not, I guess, who are not clients?
Yes, you're correct. So we, for Host and Path and other homeless outreach teams, there's double documentation. So we have HMIS, the HMIS system, and then our Avatar system. And so if a client is open to services similarly and/or they are eligible or qualified for services, then we would put it into Bell's or into MyAvatar. If it's just a contact, hey, Sherry, and we don't know if they have mental health concerns or we're not at the point yet of doing an assessment, we would put that in HMIS.
Just seems like such a wonderful system that the whole community should be using. Might be able to share data that are, well, let me just ask you this question then. So if you're, if you're on a team like Host with people working from other agencies, can you just, can you share it with folks from those other agencies or no?
For Host particularly, they have Apricot, which is a system that Host uses. So the paramedics use that and the DAC uses it. And so we all use this other system called Apricot, which is actually a pain point because our staff have to document in multiple systems. So I would love it if they could use one system, but it's not set up right now.
But it sounds like we're leading the way in using this kind of tool. For everybody in the industry, AI is gonna be built into their EHR.
But it's not right now.
It's not, but we, we're rolling this out slowly. We're kind of baiting and then people are opting in to use it. As soon as we get adoption, greater adoption. Ideally, this is, this is gonna be available for all, all of our providers, for anybody who is one of our patients, one of our consumers. That is the goal.
Yes, that is the goal.
And to the extent that we can make this available through an API or other mechanism with our stakeholders, other community providers, we want to encourage that so they have the benefit of the same functionality tool. And we also have access to the data that is collected through their use of the tool. That's big picture, correct?
Big picture, correct. And it would simplify things for staff because we wouldn't have to dole or triple document.
Amen.
So yes, we would, we would love that.
Yeah, maybe getting ahead of, ahead of the, I'm thinking into the future about sharing across the community because this is a wonderful program.
That is the future, but we're doing a great, I mean.
Yeah, this is great.
Baby step. And I think, but that is, I think the essence of her questions is the request and the encouragement to make this available. You know, to the extent we see opportunities for sharing with other community providers, other community stakeholders, let's try and take advantage of them. And if there's a way the board can support you guys in, in making that happen, let us know.
Yeah, so Apricot, for example, is that, that's what it's called, right?
Apricot.
That may be working just fine. But if, but if Bell's is better for a team like that, you know, at some point in the future, maybe there's an opportunity to talk to, talk to the, you know, the other entities that are part of Host to, to use something like Bell's.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Tara. Really appreciate it. I think everybody's very excited about the potential, what we're, we've got going here. Thank you.
Very cool.
Thanks for all the good questions, everyone. Right. Let's move on to item 5B, which is the 88th Legislative Session Update and Priorities. Anne and Muna?
Hi, welcome. Are y'all just having so much fun now?
Oh. Awesome. Forward to hear more about it.
Hey, I'm Muna Devade, Senior Planner, Government Affairs Liaison. And I will be updating you on the 88th Texas Legislature that started in January. Just as a little refresher, as a little refresher on the legislature, it's comprised of 150 members on the Texas House side. That's known as the lower chamber. And then 31 members on the Senate side, that's known as the upper. They meet every odd number year to pass the state's two-year budget and other laws from January to May. They're only required to pass the budget. That's their main goal for the session. And it's known as the regular session. So the governor can call a special session outside of this timeframe. And that can go up to 30 days. There can be second special session, a third. And those will be specific items outlined by the governor. So what's the pace of the legislature? In the first few months, the session's usually pretty slow. By late January, they start assigning committee assignments and they begin holding hearings for the bills. In February this month, the governor usually outlines his emergency items during his State of the State speech. And I just wanted to note, in his State of the State, he did reference the fentanyl crisis and he is supportive of, yeah, he is supportive of fentanyl testing strips. And so Senator Eckhart in our delegation has proposed legislation on the legalization of fentanyl test strips as well as Representative Talarigo in our, in our delegation as well. We'll be meeting with him in about two weeks. And we did meet with Senator Eckhart. And so we will be staying on top of those bills, but there's dozens and dozens of bills on the fentanyl test strip piece. So that's exciting. And the governor also mentioned support for Narcan, overdose reversal kits and supporting Narcan in general. So those are two positive things that came out of his State of the State. Then in April, May, the pace really quickens. Deadlines begin, so the bill filing deadline is next month. And then May 29th is the last day of the session. There's a lot of ways to keep up with legislation, Texas Legislature Online. And that has all the bills for this session filed. And you can look up anything related to mental health, substance use in IDD. So that's a really good resource. So our comptroller this session, comptroller is just a fancy word for the state's accountant. And he released his revenue estimate and he projected that Texas will have 188.2 billion available in general revenue. So there is a surplus for the next two-year budget term. And on that, a lot of advocates for child and family services in Texas say that the revenue estimate presents a chance to address areas like student mental health and lack of high-quality, affordable healthcare. So just a quick look back from last session. There was some landmark legislation last session. Anywhere from school districts using education funds for social, emotional learning, positive relationships, things like that. There was legislation on court interactions with defendants who have mental health issues. So access to prescription medication for care, stabilization of inmates with mental illness. Also increased access to behavioral health services in both primary, in primary care for both children and adults. And then the big one was SB 1, it provided funding for additional Medicaid waiver slots to provide individuals with IDD more opportunities to live outside of institutional settings. I did wanna mention Rider 56 because that was legislation that we worked on with Representative Donna Howard's office. And I got a lot of support from Sherry and Kat on this one. It was actually Kat Conti's idea, so thank you for that. It directed HHSC to evaluate the feasibility and costs associated with, including patient dosing information in the opioid treatment program central registry. And the thinking behind that was when there's natural disasters in our community and there's emergency workers trying to provide substance use services to individuals in the community, they didn't have access to their dosing information. So there's no way to find out when all systems are down, what their dosing is. And so states like New York, New York have dosing information and that started after 9/11. And so that's something that we got passed last session. So that was really exciting. And then on the federal side, the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act was passed. It's landmark legislation. And it provided funding to dramatically increase access to comprehensive mental health and substance use services by expanding CCBHCs. So that was huge on the federal side. And the bill also includes aid to increase access to telehealth services, mental health awareness programs, like Mental Health First Aid. And then the big one, providing more funding for the 988 suicide and crisis lifeline, which currently is funded mostly on the federal side. So during the interim, so before the session begins, some of the areas of focus were student mental health. We followed these interim committees closely, submitted comments on a number of these topics, but really exploring the impact of COVID on students' mental health, the availability and workload of mental health professionals across the state and their role in the public school system. The committee made recommendations to reduce or eliminate existing barriers to provide mental health services in classroom settings through teletherapy. Other focused issue areas, the need to increase mental health workforce, about staffing shortages, behavioral health and recovery needs for individuals involved in criminal justice, affordable housing, improving supports and mental health outcomes for veterans experiencing PTSD and TBIs. And prefiling for this session started in early November and there were over 1,000 bills filed. So Integral Care, we've identified priorities across mental health services, children's crisis services, substance use disorder services, housing, IDD, and criminal justice. And there should be our priorities documented at your desk and reference. So we worked very closely with the Texas Council for Community Centers on areas of focus that we are sharing with our local state delegations, so senators and representatives. We've begun those meetings. Like I said, we've already met with Senator Eckhart and Senator Donna Campbell's office. And then tomorrow, we're meeting with Representative Howard's office. And so the area that we're really emphasizing this session is workforce. So really just emphasizing this because there's three major initiatives coming online. So one of, so I'm, begin our meetings really pushing for this idea of. this idea of retaining and recruiting workforce in mental health. And so the three major programs or initiatives that are going to come online are, so there's two new funding strategies through the 1115 waiver extension. And basically, the 1115 waiver was extended. And there's two new funding strategies for individuals with serious mental illness who are receiving some Medicaid, as well as low-income insured individuals with SMI. So we'll really need the staff to implement those two new funding strategies. Then the second one is the 988 National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. So really, our system is going to be challenged to keep pace with the demands of population growth. You know, increased funding will be necessary for outpatient services to go to scale. So Dawn actually really helped me formulate this in terms of emphasizing meeting the demand for referrals from 988. So we can have this really great resource where, you know, we're getting these calls throughout our community, as we're the one of only four crisis hotline centers in the state. But do we have the staff and the resources to provide ongoing services to those who call in? So that is the big challenge. And then finally, starting this year in March, so next month, the federal requirements for day habilitation services are going to change. And so it's going to transition to individualized skills and socialization, ISS for short. So when this big transition happens, we're going to have to be prepared with, of course, the staff and fully-staffed programs in IDP to provide those social communication, daily living, health and wellness services. So that was the Texas Council Integral Care Collab. And then now I'm going to go a little bit deeper into the integral care priorities. So one of the things we're talking about is IDP. That's been also a big one. And the Senate Finance Committee hearing that I attended this week, that was the main topic. There was so many family advocates and, you know, individuals diagnosed with IDP that came and shared their stories about waitlists, some people waiting over 10 years, 16 years on these waitlists. And so really pushing for a reduction in these waitlists to get these community-based services through those waivers. So really coordinating LITAs with HHSC. One thing that I did note is that Senator Cole Course did mention that she wanted some kind of oversight committee for why this, there was such a bottleneck and why there was such a backup for individuals trying to access these waiver programs. So just wanted to make a note on that. And then on the criminal justice side. So really looking at preventing the overuse and misuse of, you know, emergency departments, hospitalizations, you know, during a mental health crisis, by really having this robust crisis response in communities at all times. So one of the things that I'm mentioning in our visits with the state offices is expanding outpatient competency restoration and really emphasizing the individuals that are waiting in jails, waiting for competency restoration and just how long they're waiting and how many individuals. So in 2021, the number of people found mentally incompetent stand trial in Texas, waiting for restoration treatment at a state hospital, did hit a new record. Just around 2,000, and actually Senator Eckhart's staff said that it's increased since this number. So they're really emphasizing the importance of outpatient competency restoration. And we worked with staff internally. And there was a proposal that we formulated for possible legislation, which is expanding the authority to place individuals on a peace officer emergency detention to licensed professional counselors and licensed clinical social workers. So this priority is actually on the city of Austin's policy priorities. And there was interest from the county as well. There was support from NAMI as well. And so that's been something that we've been proposing and, you know, looking for sponsorship on that. So we'll see. But there has been a lot of local support for that item. And then on substance use disorder, I do make a mention, meeting with the offices, you know, to emphasize that there is an opioid crisis in our community. And, you know, just the number of people in Travis County that have been impacted by opioid overdoses and really meeting parity with mental health and primary care services. Substance use still really does not get the same reimbursement rates and funding. So really focusing on, and then of course, harm reduction. Harm reduction has seen a lot of support in, on the state side, which has been really exciting. Like I mentioned, the governor supporting fentanyl test strips, as well as providing Narcan in the community.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yeah, of course.
So when you say harm reduction, it's a lot more than the strips.
It is.
It also includes things that are against Texas state law. Any comments with regard to what they're doing with the laws that are preventing a full, more robust harm reduction effort?
Yeah, so that's a really good point. It has, on the state side, seemed to be reduced to fentanyl test strips. But we do share with the legislators about, you know, safer use supply, you know, allowing community-based organizations to really provide these things like clean needles, which is still very controversial, I think, for, you know, a lot of electeds. Because, you know, there's the education piece. And so really helping them understand that there's some conventional treatment programs that just do not work. And so it's great that naloxone and Narcan is being promoted as well. But you're right. Harm reduction is a huge, kind of, there's a large array of services that are provided under harm reduction.
Yeah, so it's probably easy to talk about naloxone, fentanyl, rather than harm reduction.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's a good starting point, I think, because that was not really talked about at all last session. And then I did want to make mention of the Good Samaritan Law, because that was something that internal staff had suggested. And you'll be happy to know that it's supported by Senator Eckhart. She is going to propose that. And basically, this law, which encourages reporting and overdose, it exists, but there's still some things that disqualify people from being protected in those situations. So, you know, if you've been previously convicted of a drug offense, you know, or, you know, you've called for medical assistance for an overdose in the last 18 months, then you're disqualified. So really pulling some of those disqualifiers out of the Good Samaritan Law. And then one of the other pieces of legislation that we want to propose is which Sherry had suggested, which I thought was wonderful. And we've gotten some interest from the senator's office about providing mobile methadone and medication services. So the federal law changed recently to allow for medication-assisted therapy through mobile units. And so we are supporting the state, basically, updating to that federal change. Right now, in Texas, mobile units are not permitted to provide medication-assisted treatment. It's it's only allowed within brick and mortar.
Within what?
Brick and mortar, so like, yeah. And so that's some interest from the senator's office as well. So we'll keep pursuing that one. I'll mention it tomorrow as well. And then children's really increasing overall service capacity for children's mental health services. This one, the thing that I'm emphasizing the most is in Travis County, we do not have any kind of space where children can stabilize when they're in a crisis. The only option in the county is to go to the emergency room. And, you know, parents, families are waiting hours, weeks in emergency departments because they just do not have anywhere to go. And then with the stressors from COVID and just the limited number of beds dedicated to pediatrics, psychiatric care, it really is creating this bottleneck in emergency departments. And, you know, our Pilar Sanchez from the county has also emphasized this, that we're having to send our children to, or outside of the county, to receive that kind of care. So that is the main focus under childrens that And then finally, housing. So really focusing on, you know, the Housing First model, promoting permanent supportive housing and ongoing service provisions, you know, bringing the numbers to the table. So, you know, both the last two visits we had, I've shared, you know, from our return on investment document for Terrace at Oak Springs, showing those cost savings for our Terrace at Oak Springs end-of-year return on investment report, you know, you see like $14,000 per person in cost savings in the community, you know, avoiding those emergency visits, arrests, jail time, things like that. So that's been something that I've really been pushing and sharing is not only that it's evidence-based in that it is best practice, but it also is really the cost savings are there. So finally, a look ahead. Like Anne mentioned this week, I provided testimony at the Senate Finance Hearing, really urging the committee to support the proposal that was submitted by the Texas Council of Community Centers. So they proposed, based on the Consumer Price Index, a 155 million budget proposal in general revenue for the biennium. And this proposal, you know, breaks it down, you know, adult mental health, children's mental health, IDP crisis. So they came, their final number came to 155 million. So that's something that I mentioned in my testimony, as well as increasing hourly wages for for direct attendance. Their starting pay is at $8.11. And so that's kind of what I was sharing with you at the beginning of this presentation is that, you know, there's people that are leaving those roles for, you know, $15, $20 per hour jobs like, you know, at Amazon or Google or KeyTerry's or EGB. And, you know, a lot of these families rely on these direct care workers. And, but, you know, they're not really even making a living wage. So that was what my testimony was on this week. And then I did mention already the proposed legislation that we've had, so for substance use, the mobile units, and then the peace officer emergency detention. One thing to note is that the speaker created a select committee on healthcare reform. And they began in the interim, but they're still working through the session and really studying the implications of excessive healthcare costs, the efficacy of Texas Medicaid and the private health insurance market, and how that impacts Texans, businesses, state government. And then, yeah, so these meetings, they've gone really well. I just want to make note that Senator Eckhart's office, they're interested in our suggestion on the mobile net access. So I'm going to keep touching base with their office on that one. They were looking to our position on SB 944. And we opposed that. And that was the guardian of a proposed resident or resident, if they're a minor, that the parent of the proposed resident petitions to the court to issue a commitment order. So, you know, integral care, you know, we felt that, you know, it would bypass some measures that have been historically put in place to ensure the prevention of unnecessary institutionalization. So we gave them some direction on that. And then also tomorrow, when we meet with Representative Howard, their office has proposed legislation on firearms on the premises premises of LMHS, community mental health centers and LITAs. And so we'll be talking to them about that, but that is something that we support. And that concludes
To add a couple of things to what Muna said, that the staff that we've spoken to have been so engaged and supportive of the work that Integral Care does and that community centers do across the state. So that was really just heartening and inspiring to see that, that they seem to be all in with what we're doing and how they can support us. And we also, in addition to providing the packet that you guys have and these discussions, talk to them about mental health first aid, how we can provide them support to their staff if they would like to take that training. We share some self-care tips and tools with them. The magnets that we did as the self-care campaign last winter, we share those with staff as well. So trying to not only talk about our priorities, but make sure that they have resources for the staff and constituents as well. And just to give Muna and our program team some accolades, they all worked really well, hard collaboratively to identify the priorities that we put forward as Integral Care's legislative agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, Muna? Muna, thank you for the level of detail with your presentation. Like, I was glued to it. I enjoyed hearing all of the sublayers, and I really appreciate that, enjoyed it. This was a great presentation, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
There's never a dearth of things to talk about at the legislature, unfortunately. So many things that we just seem to, I was just reminded of.
So many things that we just seem to, I just reminded of kind of the perseverance that we need to have, right? Things we didn't talk about last session that we're talking about this session. We just have to keep putting more foot in front of the next because these things.
Could I ask a question? So, so how do you, I don't, you may not know at this point. So if you don't, that's fine because it's still early. I'm just curious about the the prospects for the initiative to extend the professionals that can, I'm going to get the words wrong, but as you said earlier, the professionals that can certify or what's the right term?
The peace officer emergency.
Yes, yes. Do you have any sense yet of how that's going or I know it's early and you may not, so.
Yeah, so that's a good question because there has been, I guess, so Greg from NAMI, we talked to him about it. And he was saying that in the past, there has been opposition. And of course, that's not a reason to not pursue something. But that EMS has, EMS organizations have come out and said that they 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 do not support that. Because there's this fear that it's not going to be in conjunction with law enforcement and that it'll just be this free for all of getting these emergency detention, you know, approvals. But, you know, I will say that it is successful in other states. California already does this. And, you know, we really emphasize in our meetings that law enforcement is so stretched thin already, along with all their other responsibilities to do these emergency detentions. And I think there are, there, there are a lot of people in law enforcement that would would benefit from LPCs or LCSWs being able to, you know, speed up that process and make that call. So, so I, you know, we'll see. I don't know, but I'm hopeful. I'm always hopeful.
Yeah, Sheriff.
Yeah, I just was going to ask, are you, are you seeing it from a law enforcement standpoint that they're coming out against it also? Or or just from like EMS?
So there's, no one has actually proposed this yet in the past. There's been similar ideas, like, for example, ER physicians doing holds and things like that. And there was opposition to that. So I think this is the Don's team was who, you know, suggested this because they are in the field and they do see that sometimes there isn't enough availability or, you know, like I said, you know.
No, no, I do. I guess my question, I clearly see why we're trying to.
If anyone would, you would.
Yes, so I totally understand that. I just was wondering if there was opposition from law enforcement and if so, who are they?
I have not actually seen any opposition on the law.
That's another thing we're using that app for.
Maybe I need to get on my phone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we finished item number five. We'll move on to six. David, this is your report.
Okay, I'll be brief this evening and you've heard a lot of in-depth presentation. I think everyone knows this. I just, I do want to state, we've heard, you know, support and opposition, that our formal lobbying is through our trade association. And Reverend Callahan represents us on that group, so we work closely. We provide education and information in that regard. We're often invited and just like Muna clarified, you know, we may actually do the research around other states and and offer that educational process that I think the staff really appreciates in the legislative, during this legislative session. I just, just want to say also that, you know, as referenced, that this one hundred and eighty-eight billion dollar biennial budget that's coming up, that, Muna, I just want to also just add that there's also that thirty-two point seven billion dollar surplus. And we're getting calls because this could be one-time expenditures and not be sustained in the budget through the biennium. So as an example, are there any private hospitals that have vacant beds that could be funded currently for some additional individuals to be served? And so we're getting some probes from the state on helping to put together information that may be helpful in that regard. And then again, that growing rainy day fund that may be somewhere, one of those is far better than I do. But, you know, could go up to twenty-six, twenty-seven billion dollars here within the state. And then there also the state's holding on to ARPA funds. So combined, this is that historical moment of of the amount of funds that are there. More I could say, but again, you've covered, you've done, you've done a great job. And I got a call from Texas Council when Muna finished her testimony and they said that she made us all proud statewide, so well done. On the first item, on the Collaboration Committee that we're working with the union, the second Tuesday afternoon of every month, we meet the union right on time. Once again, a suggest suggested topics. We're able then to work through those topics. We keep meeting notes carefully. How we carry over things that we think we need more research on. I just would compliment the the co-president, the union reps on on just the collaborative way that the issues are brought forward. And just four things from this Tuesday, and I'll answer questions, but just the the topical areas is the offer to help on the work with job descriptions, how they read and how they can attract professionals into our organization. We've had more than six hundred different job descriptions. And you can imagine starting to click through those within our website for application. We've moved down now to looking at less than two hundred, which still is a large number. But it's a, it's a way to be able to attract and bring more interest in our organization without putting the burden on searching across all the jobs on the individual employment seeker. Also, there was a recommendation that we look at the one area, which is our qualified mental health professionals. And that'll be the first time through that we've worked with them on a job description and we'll put that up on our, on our website. So I appreciate, again, the the work and examples and wording that have been offered. Second of all, there's a discussion around and has been brought forward by the by the in the union, which is to consider in the FY twenty-four budget, a cost of living adjustment. We made that five percent this last year. I would note that one of our competitors for employees here is the state. And they have built into Senate Bill one, a five percent COLA for twenty-four and a five percent additional for twenty-five. And so there'll be a lot of budget factors that we'll have to look at. The other part of the discussion, again, is that any suggestions that the union would bring forward on five percent of our highest paid employees is a lot larger amount of money than five percent on our lowest paid employees. And is there any tiers or any ways that we can look at, look at how the five percent would be applied within the organization? But next of all is this idea of improving communication between management and direct care staff. You know, we put out a great deal of employee newsletters, HR news, CEO transparencies, emails. I think that what the union has helped us to say is that we've done really a pretty good job on what, but we haven't often explained why. And they brought forward a really good example, one that really created a lot of awareness for me. And I actually mentioned it last month, where there was an interest within the units of how there could be a greater immediate information on how maintenance requests, facility changes and where they were in process. And so if there was a report, I'll just make this up, but of a leaky pipe, some weeks went by. Where is that in the queue? What could be expected next? And so we've implemented a software called Maintenance X that allows for a representative from each unit to be able to track on work orders and where we're at on maintenance. And so I would report to you that we've done a great job of communicating and allowing for communication. The union feedback on that one example was, is it a memo, timely memo went out, said, here's an opportunity. It didn't really explain clearly like why and how it could be used, you know, within the organization. And so I thought that example for feedback could be informative on how communication could be improved here. The last area that we covered was a request for a procedure that's here for a lot more information on why is it a best practice? What kind of data are we keeping around just-in-time scheduling? Which is a walk-in ability for for family members to be able, or individuals in the case of adults, to receive services. And the union last Friday made available a list of specific data that they were looking for and specific narratives around how we've implemented just-in-time scheduling. And so we went to work on that as soon as we received it. And today, before this meeting, I had an updated conversation with the union representatives on where we are at in that data request. So those are the four topics from last week and more to come in in working with our integral care union representatives. I also just want to give a little kudo to Rodney, Rodney, since I also heard it on the phone today. But there was a suggestion to put a link on our, to our, all of our policies and procedures on E three, which is our employee homepage. Rodney did it the next day and it was appreciated that now, rather than have to search through SharePoint and other things for policies and procedures, they all have their own homepage. Click on one link and have that access. So thank you, Rodney. Any questions on our work with the union and their collaborative meetings? Also, I'd like just to cover very quickly, Scott could not be with us rough this evening and he was going to make this presentation. But if we could just put those three slides up. We had, you know, three weeks ago, the ice storm. And so how did that ice hit us as an organization? What happened with the weather? And we ended up having three days in which non-essential workers did not have to drive and report to work. Now, we don't follow specifically informally AISD, but we're informed by how the school district and in particular childcare impacts our employees. And so I believe we, if we aired, it was on the side of, out of abundant caution to be sure that we didn't put our consumers and family members at risk. And we had no reported injuries from either employees or consumers during this point, point in time. So that's very significant. Yeah, the picture's just to bring it all back, doesn't it? And I take a lot of razzing from the family of spending time on the weather channel. So I gravitate toward the upper left here, but at any rate, that's another story. Can we go to the next one, please? I just want to just mention that, just this, on that last one, I'm sorry, just the sheer impact. And I don't need to say how much dialogue has come within our city around information on when fallen trees, limbs, what kind of power outages and when they would be restored. And so communication becomes important during this time. I would say that within the executive management team, a constant open line. There was also some preparation that went into, that we learned from our debrief on the last storm. Yuri that also helped prepare us for this one. Next slide. Only one to go after this. So what were some of the resources? And again, Hans Riedel and his staff really worked hard to be sure that all sites had their go-to kits. We provided salt, generators, water bottles and for each of our facilities across the community. Marlene, at the very end, I'm just going to ask from a staff standpoint, if you just want to make a remark or two. This is from a facilities report that also we used our alert media. We can send out texts to all staff to give them updates, carry updates on our websites, you know, our website. And again, again, essential staff were identified and let known to continue their operations. There's certain residential treatment functions and other things where it's, our folks have to be on duty through the storm. And then facility staff made daily rounds to monitor conditions and respond to needs. And that was all part of our agency-wide response. And then in our last slide, we also just, and again, I'm not going to read this to you, but the essential services all stayed open. They were provided through the storm, through the storm. Fifteenth Street, the power went out. We felt since we were across the street from a hospital, it probably would come back on again. But we did reach a point where we did have to evacuate some of the individuals, other residential treatment sites. Also, ours, on Airport Road, our psychiatric emergency services, a power line went down, went across our driveway. And so again, we worked and alerted the city to that. That was one area that we had to be sure that not only did we work closely with the city, but to not have staff or clients in that dangerous area. This MRC is the city's resource centers. And what was interesting was an invitation that while citizens were looking maybe at resources around food, power and other essentials, mental health was actually included in those resource centers. And it was, I think, an important, you know, new ground for us to, space for us to occupy. And I mentioned some of our individual team supports that we provided at Cold Weather Shelters. Worked very closely side by side with city staff. And the other areas here was the the North Lamar Professional Building. Some, they put these acronyms to see if I actually remember what they are. Scott's presentation. This is our IDD building up past Fifty-first Street and Lamar. And clinic services were closed and also many of our employees lost power and were really challenged with internet at their home during the storm. So you can see a lot of contact via telephone on putting the standing back up internet services. So I really appreciate all the work that was done during the storm. I think everyone in the room in one way or another experienced, well, maybe somewhere out of state during that time. But most folks in the room were, you know, directly affected by this, by this ice storm. So I'd be glad to answer any.
Like you knew it was coming.
I didn't want the time to go by without, you know, giving some orientation to the board on our staff and consumer impact.
Well, thank you, David. Appreciate everyone's response to this storm. These things are, I don't know. I used to think, you know, like they were aberrations and now I don't think we have aberrations anymore. I think we just have to be prepared. We have to continue to look for the things that we take for granted, but need further preparedness, like power. So.
Well, I'm giving this report, I'm fully aware that the sheriff is right there and I'm sure that her leadership experienced every aspect of this and more.
It was very challenging. I had a staff member who was under a eighteen-wheeler for over an hour. Oh my gosh. But very thankful for EMS and all of the different law enforcement firefighters. They thought that he was going to lose his arm. But they got him out from under the eighteen-wheeler, got him to the hospital. And he was home with two fracture, two breaks in his arm that they did surgery on and doing very, very well. Glad to hear that.
All right. I think we're through the agenda. And before I go to Sis' comments, I just want to give a shout out to the team again. You've been through a lot over this last month since we saw you last. Kudos to the team on the audit. Going through a lot of change and transition. That's a lot. I know it's really hard to get an audit produced, so thank you to the team. That's. to get an audit produced, so thank you to the team that's moving ahead on everything. Bell's AI, super fun. I know, we're excited, I hope everybody in your team gets super excited about it, too. And thanks to everybody for taking care of things during, during the storm. So, we've got citizens' comments last, so that's item number seven. There's anybody that wants to talk to us tonight? Come on up.
I'll go first.
All right, so, welcome.
Oh, hi, I'm Andrea Goldstein, I am one of the, I'm the team lead at the clinic at Community First Village, and I've been with the agency for 12 and a half years, and I'd like to be here for another, till I'm 70, so maybe, I guess like 17 years. So, humor me, by a show of hands, how many people provide direct services to our clients in this group? So, I come to these meetings from time to time, and what I've often noticed is that what's shared, for example, with the Bell's AI, you know, the time of writing a note being, you know, under four minutes, things like that don't match up with my experience or the experiences of anyone I talk to. And I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'd like, I feel like there's more to the story. And unfortunately, I mean, most of our staff, they can't take off work early and drive all the way to like the fancy part of Austin in traffic and then, you know, go all the way home. And a lot of them have, you know, their single moms, so they're not going to be able to share their experience, whether it's citizens' comments or whatever. So that's why the union is so important, and I really appreciate you, David, for coming to the process with a very collaborative and receptive spirit. And you've always seemed very willing to just, you know, hear, to listen, and then provide, you know, listen to solutions, which is awesome. And I like when you kind of give an update on, you know, what the agenda topics are, but again, from those like bullet points, you're not really getting, you're not really, you're not getting any nuance, you're not, you know, it's just, you're not really getting the voice of the people that are actually doing the work that y'all are talking about. And so with that said, since, you know, workers, and I'm, I'm speaking as Andrea, a worker and a member of the union, I'm not speaking for the union. But the union ICCP meetings are, I find really, we have serious conversations, sometimes uncomfortable conversations, and I'm happy about how it's going. What would make me happier, though, is do y'all, does the board, do y'all get the, the meeting minutes sent to you? Like, I just want to know, like, are you aware of what's happening at the union? Because if you just hear those like agenda items, I don't, I, I don't think you're getting the information that, that you need. So. One more question? Meeting minute. And David, is there a way for they can, for them to watch the video? Just because it really, you get to hear people really discuss why just-in-time scheduling is a, is a issue. So my, my deepest request is, is if you would be willing to read in depth and to actually view the conversation, listen to the conversation, you'll have fun. It's a, I mean, it's a, it's smart people talking about serious things, I think you get a lot out of it, and just from, you know, group dynamic standpoint, it's fascinating.
Thank you, Andrea.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
All right, hi, you all, I'm Sonya Burns. I also gave comment at the Senate Finance, and I think that one thing that you all should know is that she does want to have Senator Cole-Coore's oversight over the LITAs, but more specifically, it was because of lack of referrals to state-supported living centers. So I've said it here before, Integral Care has made 10 referrals in five years, even though currently, last I checked, there are 1,330 people currently eligible for an SSLC, state-supported living center. That does not mean they should all go there. But as I've mentioned many times, we have people in jails, we have people in the hospitals, we have people cycling and cycling who need this resource, who are not referred. And I sit in meetings, David, you and I sit in meetings together, and Ken, you presented once the Travis County Behavioral Health Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, and I heard every single attorney in there say, why are we not referring? HHSC has on their website, for state-supported living centers, that there's also respite and emergency admissions. The other day, the Executive Council of HHSC had their quarterly meeting, and only one person showed up to give public comment, and she represents group home providers. And she was talking about some inconsistencies with the settings rule, I'm not going to go into the weeds on that with you all, but what was most telling was at the end, she talked about home and community-based services, the waiver you get, we talk about this long list of over 100,000-plus people, and it's a no refusal policy, zero reject, which in theory we want, except that we are not being person-centered to the level of need someone might require. And so she said, we have had clients die, we have had direct care staff die, we have people go to jail, we have people going in and out of the mental health hospitals. So, this is a huge problem, and I've been talking about this forever. I got a rider from Senator Watson and Senator Cole-Coore's two sessions ago, for in the strategic planning of the state-supported living centers, we wouldn't just look at people who are currently eligible, but also people with behavioral health needs. I'm trying to capture this group of people served under IDD auspices that can't get the SSLC when everybody around them is saying, okay, you don't have your diagnosis by 18 or IQ of 69 or below, but you're not going to survive in the group home or all these other things that we're going to fast-track you ahead of the list, and everybody's agreeing you need a supervised and structured setting. So I'm just saying, I'm going to all the legislators, too, I'm kind of surprised because it does kind of sound like lobbying, if you're saying we oppose this bill. So, but right now, Ash and Sash are supposed to come online on Austin State Hospital and San Antonio State Hospital, right now in Austin, just so you all know, 100 of the 153-ish people who are there are the long-term population. I will be very quick. I have been telling everybody, when we open those two hospitals, we need funding, and HHSC should have asked for this, and I hope that you all will consider being supportive. We needed funding for staffing and programming for the people that need longer term to stay in the current hospitals, and we are doing major data collection, David knows about this, with the medical director, Dr. Jeffrey Matthews, who's the medical director of all state hospitals, and this is where we can be person-centered, it's the most person-centered data collection I have ever seen in all of these spaces, and that's where you go back to the counties and say, actually, you need nursing homes for people with serious psychiatric issues, you need campus settings, some people need SSLCs, all these different things. But it is frustrating to come here, because I have been going at, my twin brother has been living at Ash for 14 years now, his IQ is a little too high for a state-supported living center. I got another rider last session for step down from the state hospitals on the campuses of the SSLCs. And to have my own LITA and my own LMHA not ever support me, and in all these years not sit down with me and say, what could we do to create an opportunity for your brother to live safely and thrive, is very frustrating. He's not a unicorn, there are many, many, many of my brothers. And unfortunately, because we won't acknowledge them, they do end up in the jails, and it's not fair.
There anyone else? Okay, call this meeting adjourned, and it is 6:59, I believe. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Trish. Thank you, David. Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate y'all being here.